Before we go any further, I'd like to welcome our new city administrator, Brian Gaddel. Welcome, Brian, and probably the most people you'll ever see in the Council of Eddies. Okay, we will move on to appearances. I will read the names and information for the people who just registered in favor of first, and then we'll call up the people who would like to speak, and you'll each have three minutes to speak. So that's our typical rule. Okay, so first of all, these are all regarding the Riverfront Development or the Yacht Club. Mary Foul, 808 Douglas Trail, like to register in favor of...
Excuse me, Mayor, one second. The doors need to be open?
Yeah.
Can you open the door behind your back there, please? Thank you. Just shove it pretty hard. There you go. Thank you.
Grant LaPlant, 5814, I'm not sure what...
Lake Edge.
Lake Edge, in favor. Mark Weiner, 6208 Renee Court McFarland, in favor. Chad Whiteside, 106 Charlene Lane, in favor. Joe Presington, 5514, Goocher Lane, in favor. Jim Lampy, 5412 McKenna Road, in favor. Philip Dowell, 431 Aspen Street, Johnson Creek, in favor. David Heft, 1602 Angel Crest Way, in favor. John Johnson, 18 Harwood Circle North, in favor. Jenny Johnson, 18 Harwood Circle North, in favor. Roger Frankie, 3753 Sky High and Cottage Grove, in favor. Don Kelleher, 5407 Schuder Road. I know, you checked that you wanted to register, and then you also said, I guess you checked in the "I'd like to speak" line for informational purposes only, but you just want to register. Okay. Michael Vilbrandt, 2660 Norwich Street, Pittsburgh, would like to register in favor. Mike Paulus, 6111 One Aquor Road, would like to register in favor. Kelly Unke, 6111 One Aquor Road, register in favor. Helen Heft, 1602 Angel Crest Way, register against. Don Paulson, 5509 Calico Drive, Madison, register in favor. Kathy Condit, 4101 Manona Drive, number 301, register in favor of the Riverfront Project. Dr. Laura Week, 1103 Nashitian Trail, would like to register in favor. Steve Wilkie, 1103 Nashitian Trail, would like to register in favor. John Pogue, no address that says Madison, would like to register in favor of the Four Lakes Yacht Club speakers. Steve Jackson, 309 Dover Way, Sun Prairie, would like to register in favor. Robert Gonzalez, 5513 Thunderbird Lane, would like to register in favor of fair treatment of the club. David Dowell, 5624 Ambrosia Terrace, McFarland, would like to register in favor of the yacht Arch McCormick?
Andy.
Andy McCormick, 3826 One Ona Way, would like to register in favor. And Zach Kraus, 700 Interlake Drive, would like to register in favor. Okay, does anyone else want to register?
I'd like to make an amendment if I could. My wife read the slip a little bit, she's in favor.
Okay. Could you give us her name and address?
Angel Crest Way.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Helen Hade, 1602 Angel Crest Way.
Okay, I think I have one for her.
It was about...
Oh, did I already read that one? Okay. All right. Then we've got the people who would like to speak. The first one is Deborah Ethington, 1100 Nashitian Trail, would like to speak in favor. Next up after that will be Michael Finley, 1307 Nashitian Trail. So those of you who'd like to speak, if you could please come up to the podium.
Sure. And if I may, we had a little get-together beforehand, and I talked to the clerk earlier, but they said that the three minutes wasn't a carbon stone thing. They said if everybody wanted to speak, it'd probably be three minutes, so it wouldn't go all night. But if it was just going to be a couple of us, that we could have a little more time.
Well, I think we have about eight of you, so we're going to leave it at three minutes.
All right, well, there's some else I'll have to read.
Okay, you're the second one, she's the first one. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Ethington.
Could you speak at the microphone, please?
Yes. My name is Deborah Ethington, and we live in Squaw Bay on Belle Isle. And we've lived there now for some time, and I want to first recognize the really good job that the city did this past fall with the sandbags. I was really impressed, and I'm very grateful, and I think it's nice to hear good things once in a while. And so please pass along my thanks, because they did a really good job filling sandbags and helping us manage through a very difficult, kind of frightening situation. It was our first time with these awful floods.
Thank you.
That brings me to the incongruence with the Four Lakes Yacht Club situation. We've been members of the club for over 10 years, and as a Manona resident and our families' residents, we find ourselves in kind of a lose-lose situation. It makes me very sad as a taxpayer and as a member, because it's going to cost us a lot of money in both situations. And so I'm very hopeful that perhaps the city council could get some additional information, or maybe verify some of the information that has been presented. It's our understanding that it was recommended that the city not go to a jury trial, and a decision has been made to go to a jury trial, which, as we all understand, gets very expensive. And so I'm hopeful that maybe that won't happen. The other thing that I'd like to respectfully request is that the city bargain in good faith and actually make an offer to the folks within the yacht club for the slips that they're seeking. And that offer, please include the improvement costs and the information that Four Lakes has provided in terms of how much it has cost or how much it has spent over the past however many years to improve those slips, and to include that in an offer. And so I think that that's it. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, does that actually have speakers with that microphone?
It's recording for the cable channel. It does not have speakers, no. Judge Finley?
Madam Mayor, I'm registered to speak, but I'd like to yield my time to Michael.
Okay, and what's your name?
Gary Earl.
Well, some of you probably know me, I'm the municipal judge here in Manona. I've been a Manona resident for over 25 years now, and just recently joined, well, joined the yacht club about three and a half years ago, and was recently elected to the Board of Directors. So I've been talking a lot with the people on the Board of Directors, and I'm familiar with what's been going on with the yacht club litigation. And I thought it'd be a good idea to have some people come down and try to give a face to this, that it's not just a bunch of, a business, it's not just an entity that's being involved in this litigation, but in fact, it's a Manona business, that's been a Manona business for over 60 years, that is made up of families. It's a membership organization, and a good number of those are Manona residents, and you've got a good number of them here today that have all registered in favor of this. There are, I think, over 30 families that are Manona residents that are members of the yacht club. The problem we've had, you know, as this ongoing litigation goes on, is we just don't feel that the city has been given the correct information, that they've been led down a bad path, and frankly, some of us are shocked and frustrated by the approach from the city employees and commissions have taken in dealing with the yacht club. Part of that is, we feel that instead of partnering with a long-term, family-oriented organization to work out a plan that would be beneficial to both the interests of the city and the club, certain individuals have just decided to pick a fight, declare the lease terminated and void. We'd actually take a moment and consider this from the yacht club's point of view. Being a marina and a club dedicated to boating, we acquired land, parking rights, and access easements, along with the adjacent riparian rights from the Chase Bank property, to put in modern, safe, and secure boat docking facilities. We attempted to buy the property outright, but due to the lot size and access concerns, it wasn't considered deedable, so a 99-year lease was agreed upon, which included the club's responsibility to improve and maintain the shoreline. The lease included stipulations that called for an $80,000 payment for the lease term and at least $200,000 in improvements. That amount was paid, it was more than that, well over that for improvements. Some of it was done by yacht club members, but all new, a whole new pad was put down, new shoreline, new piers, new fencing, lighting, and we put those improvements in. The original developers were working with the club on boat slip access and trading locations, and because, you know, things that happened with the, them not being able to make it financially work because of the roads and the sewers, they basically, they couldn't do it. So as you know, the program stagnated for some period of time, and new developers came in, and the city gave them some better incentives to come in and put this development together. But along with this, the developers were told just to ignore us, and the city said that they just came and told us to get out. No offers to recompense the club for its loss of use, its purchase price, or its improvement costs were made at all. It was just get out. I guess our concern is that's certainly not a fair way to treat a long-term tax payment on a business. No discussion where additional slips could be acquired, or some way to share facilities, just get out. And we don't feel it's morally right just to take from one business assets and give them to another business. This isn't land being taken for a park or public accommodation, it's just being promised to another business. So the club sued to protect our lease slips, which slips are the lifeblood of any marina. And I also understand that before, while we were doing the five-year, five-year lease before the 99-year lease, that property actually was sold to another individual for $2.8 million that included the shoreline, even though we'd leased it and they agreed that they would continue to lease it. At that point, we hadn't had the 99-year lease. The 99-year lease went into effect, and then after that, when the city acquired the property, they got it for the bargain price of $1.6 million. So they got a $1.2 million discount, and part of that was because it didn't include the shoreline. And now the city just wants to take that and not give anything to it. Well, part of the problem that's been going on is that, you know, we fought it, and so the, this, the court upheld the lease. After hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on legal fees, of course, the city attorneys now claiming factual differences, requiring this jury trial, and even higher attorney fees, although the judge told them that was a really bad idea. So the case was set over again. The city at that time also asked the court to order mediation, to see if any settlement could be reached, which was so ordered. The yacht club attended with board members. All the yacht club members got notices to have that night open, so we could have an emergency meeting to discuss any offers. The yacht club came there with the board members, with their attorneys, and the only people that showed up from the city were the city attorney and the attorney that the city had hired. Nobody from the city, administrator, nobody else. And no offer was ever made. They asked them, and for five hours they went around, couldn't get an offer out of the city, and never made an offer to anybody. To the mediation that they asked for, they didn't make any offers. And I want to say, please understand, any monetary settlement, if a monetary settlement is ever reached, individual members of the yacht club will not receive any money. The yacht club is a boating business. The club wants to maintain slips in furtherance of its purpose, and these slips are half of the club's total slips. They're more valuable less than the money involved. Any compensation be used to pay, to acquire alternate accommodations and pay off the attorney's fees, which have been necessitated by the city's actions. And these attorney's fees are spiraling out of control for both sides. In sum, we as residents and taxpayers aren't happy with the way the yacht club, a Manona business, and we as members are being treated. We're concerned because the treatment has become entrenched in those agents of the city dealing with these issues, and a result, again, these legal fees are spiraling. Also, soon the city will be facing fines for not supplying the slips to developer. We as Manona residents and yacht club members are stuck in the middle. We're going to lose either way. We're going to lose either as yacht club members or as Manona residents. The council and the yacht club membership have the ultimate responsibility here, not the attorneys, not the CDA, or the yacht club board of directors. And as a Manona resident, I'm just asking the board to take some leadership action to break this entanglement and timely resolve these issues. We're asking simply that somebody from the city sit down with us and talk to us, and let's work this out. It just makes sense to save everyone.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Steve Griffith, 5551 Winsome Way in Pittsburgh, followed by Nathan Marbs, 4585 Kennedy Road in Cottage Grove.
Good evening. I've been here several times before as a representative of the Board of Directors for the Four Lakes Yacht Club. I can gratefully say that tonight I am not on the Board of Directors, so I can afford to speak my mind. I've been cautioned by our Board of Directors to keep it civil, because as many of my yacht club people know, I'm very passionate about this particular organization. I'm in the boating industry. I've been there for a long time, 30 years in this city, and I feel that the city of Manona has done itself and the Four Lakes Yacht Club a great disservice with the way they've handled this entire arrangement. If you'll recall, when this first project was underway, I came to these meetings as a Board of Director and said, "We would like to be part of the solution, not part of the problem." I was at two, over 20 meetings where we could have had a legal and civil discussion about trying to work out a fair and reasonable solution to this problem. And I was told at every turn that, "Oh yeah, yep, we'd love to work with you, we'd love to work with you." And then we get a notification that we are being forced to move off our piece of property. Mr. Cole sent us a registered letter that said, "Your lease is invalid." And I think after going to several of the legal downtown, the federal office, to those non-meetings, whatever, with the judge downtown, that I think, again, when I sat there, I listened to the judge, and I thought the judge was very clear in her determination that she'd made a verdict on this, she was going to stick with her ruling, and that by going any further with this without going to mediation and/or a discussion between the yacht club and the city, that she thought you were being led down the wrong path. Now, Mr. Cole may have a different opinion of that, you, as a city council, may have a different opinion of that, which I'm sure you'll discuss in closed session tonight. But I think that if you'll look at past, if the past is any kind of history, you'll realize that the yacht club has been tried, has tried to be more than fair on several occasions. In the news article that came out, there was something in there about the fact that the city had made offers to negotiate with the Four Lakes Yacht Club on numerous occasions, and that, as far as I'm concerned, being on the Board of Directors at that time is a complete and ridiculous lie. So I'm sure that was my three minutes that just buzzed, but, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nathan Marbs, followed by Timothy Ryan Tripkash, 6308 Metropolitan Lane. Mr. Marbs?
Good evening to all of you, Madam Mayor and the rest of the board. My name's Nathan Marks. I'm here to help fill in some of the blanks, provide a human face for what's happening here. First things first, my parents held their reception at the yacht club 42, 43 years ago. I was raised in McFarland. I've got a daughter going to high school at MGHS, and another nine-month-old who'll join her big sister at some point in the future. So like many of the people in here, I'm a part of this community in a very big way, and I appreciate you hearing my voice. I'm a second-generation member of this 60-year-old organization. We're a group of enthusiasts, caretakers, citizens of the waterways. We're the ones towing other boats in, we're the ones professionalizing what's really a recreational activity. What we're not, we're not playboys with big yachts, despite the name. We own pontoon boats, fishing boats, ski boats, and we're enthusiasts about these four lakes. There's an injustice going on here. Whether you know it or not, whether you're acquainted with all the facts, members of this city are using the government to pry away slips from a nonprofit group composed of family enthusiasts. And what you do tonight, and in the future, should be informed by that, you're now aware. It's already been taken in front of a judge, and there's no standing for this action. And as Mr. Michael Finley said, hundreds of thousands of dollars have been thrown at attorneys on both sides of this with no end in sight. It's costing all of us an awful lot. I'll cut to the end here. Just as we have an ethical imperative to maintain the slips in the lakes as an organization for future Four Lakes enthusiasts, we feel that the city has an obligation to stop throwing away money at prying away these slips to give them to another business. And we feel that the city has an obligation to honor its lease. Thank you all very much for your time.
Mr. Tripkash, 6308 Metropolitan Lane.
You allow us to be warned?
Oh, sure, yes.
All spots. My name's Tim Tripkash, I'm one of the owners of Breakwater, and I just decided to come here today. And just wanted to mention, I have two six-year-old girls, that were four when I opened Breakwater, and I have missed much of them growing up. To try to give Manona a place for events such as mothers and Easter brunches, networking events with other small business owners, and many other activities to create a sense of community. Being on the water and the location made it seem like that was a must for a place with the water access and the soon-to-be Manona Riverfront project or development. But with the access to the water and the construction caused by this development, it has been the cause and at the center of a conflict between our landlord, the Four Lakes Yacht Club, and the city of Manona. It is bad enough to have to start a restaurant that is dependent on weather and parking, both of which have been lacking since we opened. We have to deal with what feels like unfair treatment by the city or at best a disregard for our success, caring only for, only, or caring only about washing the hands of a deal that turns south and are costing taxpayers in the Manona area quite a lot, from what I've seen from some of my clients. So some of the things that, you know, I just want to bring to you guys, this thing to let you know, when I came here, I don't come here, I haven't been here very often, trusting that you guys would do what was in our best interest. You know, you moved the bike path to go in front of the building, taking away numerous parking spots from us. I know there's parking spots going there, but before we, you know, there were alternatives that we could have done when the bike path went across the street. Now it's going in front of our building. Nobody came and talked to us. The developer mentioned last time I was here that he'd make sure changes that were made would be discussed, never happened. The parking lot and the roads have potholes in them, had an older lady fall recently trying to walk into our building. You know, it's ridiculous. Construction vehicles, worker vehicles, taking up the small amount of stalls that we already have. You know, they took two stalls without notice and then put a big tube in them, and then two orange cones around them. We can't use them, so we're continuing to just cut into our stalls that we already have limited access to. We've been told wrong dates for construction. They turned off our water one day with less than one day of notice. You know, there's just countless things where we, I feel like you guys, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like we're getting caught between the conflict. And I came here a year and a half ago, I said, "I do not want to be part, I do not want to use as a pawn in this conflict." And like I said, I've sacrificed a lot, time, you know, you don't get that stuff back. So I know my time is short here, but the effects on this conflict ripples through areas I don't think you guys think about or don't care about. My point of being here tonight is to let you know that, to let you know, to make it pub, to make it public, what seems like unfair treatment due to your issue with our landlord in hopes of, that future meetings that you guys have, the ability to go and make a change and get things rectified and get things moving in motion to better the community. I hope you guys take that opportunity to find out nobody showed up was disheartening and disingenuine to the mediation meeting, that it was just the attorneys. It just was disheartening. And so, that's it.
Can I say something about us being... We obviously can't get into back and forth about this because it's in litigation, but I just want to clarify, this idea that none of us showed up, we were all available, we had a text, a group text going between myself, our acting city administrator, Mark Hotaker, the chair of the CDA, and attorney Cole, and we were in contact throughout the entire mediation. So we may not have been there in person, but we were in contact, and we met before to discuss it as well, so it's not that we just blew it off. So does anyone else want to speak?
Can I just ask a question? So you're going into closed session, is there a way to get the minutes of the closed session later on?
We cannot, closed sessions are private.
No.
And that it's just going to be an update, it's not, we aren't making any decisions on, and we're also going to be discussing several other items in addition to the yacht club.
Okay.
So, would anyone else like to speak? Okay, thank you very much. I'll declare the appearance section closed. There is no public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Unless someone has a problem with it, I would like to move the unfinished business, the closed session, to the end of the meeting, so that the other people we have who are appearing to make presentations can do that and not have to wait around for us. We're going to give a couple of minutes for people to just move out. Lori, you're certainly welcome to stay if you'd like.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to new business. Item G2A, consideration of resolution 19-1-2317, approval of a four-lot certified survey map, CSM for lot two and lot three of CSM 8819. This is dealing with the White Horse property, put forth by the plant commission, and Mr. Stefani.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm doing this on behalf of the city planner, who we don't have right now, but in any case, this is something that the plant commission, the public works committee, and city council looked at, I believe, a few months ago. The developer came back with some other new data, and what you have before you essentially boils down to a slight change with the entryway to the development. I handed out this map, you all should have that in front of you, tonight. As part of this, December 10, the plant commission approved the new information, and I'm reading off a bullet point provided by the interim city planner, that there be no access to lot four of the CSM from the new 50-foot private drive for the first 13 feet of the 50-foot private drive at the north end of Broadway. Number two, the existing building be demolished prior to the recording of the CSM, that would be the Chiefs Auto Parts Store. The public works committee did review and approve this CSM at the January 2 meeting. It's up at city council tonight for, I believe, just the first read. Another requirement of the new CSM is the proposed island shall not extend beyond the The proposed island shall be designated to be mountable by large vehicles trying to enter the property to the east. The lane for traffic to enter the private drive from Broadway shall be widened to 14 feet wide. 11-feet-wide turn lanes to exit the private drive remain appropriate. And roadwork on the private drive shall begin before or concurrently with the development of the first lot. There was one other item at the request of the plant commission to the public works committee, and I believe it's for city council as well, that the CSM must be filed with Dane County Register of Deeds within 12 months of city council approval. The public works committee did approve this here requirement, and I believe it's the same for city council. But what I believe, the main change for... But what I believe, the main change for, the reason the CSM came back tonight is to allow the 24-foot opening, as you see on the right side here, that would be going to the Shell gas station. Previously, that was one continuous curve, not allowing access. So, as far as I know, that would be the only difference.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you, Dan. Next item, to be presentation and discussion of final design concepts for Bridge Road Reconstruction Strand Associates. Josh Straka's got a presentation for us.
Can I ask something on the White Horse property? Do you not vote on it right now?
No, we'll be voting on it at the next meeting. We always have two reads.
So, you're going to have a next meeting, two reads?
Right, right.
It'll be on the Tuesday, though, not the Monday.
Because of Martin Luther King Day, yeah. The 22nd.
22nd?
Yeah. Generally, everything under new business is first read only, and then we bring it back at the next meeting so that everybody has a chance to give input. Yep, yep, thank you. Josh, were you going to use the?
I was going to use the slides, if you guys don't mind. I know Dan sent you stuff prior, and I made a few little tweaks to it, so I'm going to give a similar presentation tonight that I gave at the public informational meeting in early December to the public. There's a couple of things in this presentation, I know there's a further item down here that's see for you guys to consider and talk about. So I'll have a couple of things in here that I may stop, give you a little more information. If you have questions, I can answer them then, otherwise I'm going to go through it fairly quick. So, Bridge Road Reconstruction, coming in 2019, we'll kind of walk through what we're going to do and the schedule for that. So first, project limits. You can see up on the screen there, the project limits are shown in yellow. They start down here on Broadway, along Bridge Road, and carry up through, across the bridge structure of Ahara River Bridge, which we will be, there will be some improvements to that, and then to the intersection of Winnicor Road and Bridge Road, and we'll talk about that a little later. It's important to note, as part of this project, that half of it, about half of it, lies in the city of Madison on the west side, and on the east side of the triangle there is the city of Manona, and the Ahara River Bridge and everything across the river is Manona. So there's a cost share as part of this project. It's not 50/50, but when it is the street, the street is divided pretty much 50/50 cost share-wise. So what are we doing as part of the project? We have pavement and base replacement, concrete curb and gutter, water main replacement and extension, storm sewer that's going to include a 100-year design, we'll talk about all these real briefly, a sanitary sewer replacement, that will be the city of Madison, so Manona does not have that portion of it as part of this project. Ahara River Bridge structure rehabilitation, and then lighting replacement and improvements. So starting with water main, just some of the key elements, this is what drove the project initially. You can see up there the existing light blue lines, so those are the water mains that are out there today. It's hard to see, but the water main dead ends currently on Bridge Road right there today, this light blue line. There's a main that runs along Broadway, but there's really no connection in between the two. So the dark blue line is what we're going to be providing, new along Bridge Road, and then make that connection along the opposite side. We call that looping the mains. In the past, it's been a little bit isolated, where if your well's down over, along Broadway interchange there, if that well's down and you have a break or some situation here, basically that whole side of the city is down without water. So Walmart, Shopko, the rest of it. It's a small area for two things to happen at once. One, your well number three having some service done or it's down, and then a break here, but if it happens, it would be, it would be a serious situation. You'd have some interconnects with the city of Madison, but it's good to make this loop as part of this construction. So one, that water main, and then two, there's a water main that crosses the Ahara River, and that's an older cast iron main. We will be replacing that with an HDB pipe, it's a plastic pipe. We won't be digging through the river, we'll be actually boring it right across, from the intersection of Winnicor Road and Bridge Road across to the other side by Metropolitan Lane. Then we talk about storm sewer. So today, it is not designed for the 100-year storm, which is pretty typical. We designed for about a 10-year storm event. But the city of Madison currently all drains to this area. We talked about Lake Point Drive and Cranberry Creek and that whole road that goes up along that section, and all those apartments on the city of Madison side come this way. They come to this intersection now of Metropolitan Lane, as you can see here, and Bridge Road. And today, those storm sewers are only designed for about a two-year event, just over, they're not even up to the 10-year event. But we talked about the overland flow is flowing down Metropolitan Lane into the redevelopment area, across the yacht club, and then to the river. So instead of doing that, the city of Madison and the city of Manona, when we were talking about it, decided, you know, we really should take care of the 100-year storm up here and pipe it right to the river. And if there is a larger storm than that, it will still come down the redevelopment area, but let's take care of the 100-year storm, which is a little atypical, but the city of Madison agreed to pay for it and understands, you know, a portion of it they'll pay for, and a lot of the water's coming from their side. So, I think it's a smart move as part of this project to take care of the 100-year storm at that location. Additional improvements, there's four of them up there. We'll start with, the bridge has some drainage improvements and some surface improvements that we'll talk about. Existing lighting along Bridge Road is on a few of these power poles, but the power poles will also be going underground, and the lighting's a little bit inadequate, there's just a few poles along that, along that stretch. Sidewalk where there is none today on the city of Madison and the city of Manona side, and then the existing Bridge Road and Winnicor Road intersection that we'll walk through real quick. Let's first talk about the bridge. So what will happen on the bridge? You can see kind of that colored image up there. The red is bike lanes, but overall, the bridge needs a new overlay on the entire surface. Every 20 years, you take off about two inches and you overlay it with new concrete, and it protects the structure overall. If you do that, you can get 80 to 100 years out of the structure. Right now, we're at about 60, a little over 60, I believe, so, and it's been about 20 years since the concrete's come off. We plan on taking two inches off, and at the same time, we want to improve the sidewalk and the parapet walls, they're starting to fall apart, the parapet walls are kind of that concrete wall along the side, and the pedestrians. So improve the drainage along the surface, add a multi-use path. So right now, as you come out, you see this big open area. It's not really a driveline, but the bike lane comes down and you get onto this, and then you go back to go to the lake loop. So instead of going up, coming down, back onto the road, and then going up again, we're proposing that this all be raised. So we have 12 feet plus a colored two-foot stretch. So all this, as you see raised here, would be about this entire width. So the bikes would just stay up, out of traffic, as they go on the lake loop through the bridge as part of this project. Then we'd also do the parapet walls on either side and the railing. That was taken to public works committee, and we came up with a parapet wall that would kind of looked a little indented, so there was a little bit of style to it. A new railing is proposed, we're going to get a bid alternative for that. The public works committee decided, well, can we just use the old railing? The old railing does appear to be in good shape, so we're going to put a bid alternative in to either put a new railing on here or go and paint the old one black and put it back. So that, they were kind of on that to try to save some money, but they did want to put the Black Bridge, or Black Bridge on the outside of the parapet wall on either end as you're going on the river. It's a historic bridge, it was one of the only crossing of the Ahara and this chain of lakes for a long period of time, so they wanted to kind of show that off again. There's not a big cost to that. If we're already kind of stamping the walls as you go along there, you know, it's a couple thousand dollars probably is all. So, the only alternative they wanted to go with is this railing type, which is the C5. So, something that is still up for debate a little bit is new railing, old railing, is this the right railing type? This is kind of how we're specking it and going out, but if you guys want to debate a little bit on that at the end of this, by all means, it's not set in stone. But I'd like to tell the contractor what we're expecting to do, if at all possible. Lighting improvements.
I've just got a question about the Black Bridge. I understand, I've been contacted by a resident, that there's some kind of a historical marker down there?
There's two plaques also.
Okay, and we want to be sure that we're maintaining those as well?
They are, and you won't see them on my picture here, Mayor, but they're on the parapet wall on the opposite side here. So there's two plaques that were casted in, historic plaques. Those will go back on the inside wall, probably back similar to their old location. That one's a little historical one, and the other one just kind of, they're both have some historic kind of significance to them.
And in public works, we also discussed putting something, so as a pedestrian, when you're getting on the bridge, be able to?
So you can see it more easily?
And maybe an interpretive, right? Some sort of an interpretive signage on here.
You probably should talk with landmarks about that, too. Anyone else have questions?
That would probably be kind of an after, kind of, we'd add it after, you could have some interpretive signage on either side of this.
Okay.
For people to understand. Lighting improvements. So improve the lighting along the corridor. And the lighting you see here is what's proposed, it's some kind of a modern appearance, complements the redevelopment areas being black, not kind of standing out and being too flashy. You know, it's not like you're in the development, you're kind of on adjacent road beside the development. And the same style is the one that's used on Manona Drive from Cold Spring to Cottage Grove Road. The city of Madison will provide the lights and put the lights up, we're going to provide the base and the conduit, they're going to wire it in, and they're going to maintain them as part of the project. So that was the style that was readily available for them, that was the style that we were going to continue with unless there was a big thought against it. The lighting will only be on the Manona side, not the city of Madison side, because of space requirements, trees, and other things that are on the opposite side. So it'll only be coming down along the city of Madison, or, sorry, city of Manona side. And we will make sure that they're cut off and they illuminate downwards, that you have, you know, no pollution of the sky type appearance. Pedestrian improvements. There's several pedestrian improvements along the corridor. We're trying to increase the pedestrian safety through the corridor, allow for easier access to the riverfront and redevelopment area, and try to reduce the speeds along the corridor. By adding some of these, as you can kind of see there, these small little bump outs, I shouldn't say little islands, it allows pedestrians to cross one direction of traffic at a time, store if they want, and then go and look the other direction and cross the traffic on the opposite side. It also has that combing effect, right? We put some things out in the middle of the driving lanes, and people have to slow down to make sure that they avoid them, and then make sure they're paying attention on the roadway. So there'll be two here, this is kind of where, right across from the bank, Lake Shore, Lake, is it Lake Shore? Drive there, right, Lake Shore Drive? And one there, and then one further up, but where the bike path crosses at the redevelopment area on Metropolitan Lane. What does a typical section look like as part of this road? We're actually widening this road by three feet. So, three feet closer to the Manona side. So we took a little bit extra wide away and bumped it three feet closer to the Manona side. You might ask why? Well, we wanted to make sure that we could actually paint bike lanes on the street. We didn't have enough room to do that otherwise. This way, it gives us eight feet of parking on both sides of the street, a five-foot painted bike lane, two 11-foot drivelanes. City of Madison has sidewalk on their side, but we will be adding some at Cranberry Creek there to make that connection on their side. And then the city of Manona will have something on their entire side, which they don't on a majority of it now, only by the bank. So we'll connect the bank all the way up through the redevelopment area to the bridge, which is not there today. I wish that would have shown up better. It's pretty light. So, what we're here to talk about tonight is the intersection improvements. And this is Winnicor Road and Bridge Road. Today, I'm just going to walk through it today, as all of you know, as you head south on Winnicor Road, this is a free-flow right turn on the Bridge Road and across the bridge. Don't have to stop, you can just kind of go. When you come back and go up Winnicor Road, you come in, and then it's a free left movement, and a free through. So this is really, there's no stopping, you can go through and you can go left. Now, that does work well with traffic, because that's what a majority of the traffic does do. It flows that way naturally to some degree, but it does add for some concerns. So, this kind of came up because I know Dan in public works has heard from many people on, this is somewhat unsafe, it's not a traditional intersection, because it has these weird stop controls. If you do sit out there sometime, people even get confused. When should I go? Especially this movement here, they tend to get confused as they come up, like, why are other people moving? Sometimes they hesitate, they don't know, you know, sometimes these people will go, and then these right turners will hesitate a little bit because they don't, they think like somebody's going to come into them. There's a bus stop at this location, which does concern some of the parents, and the pedestrian movements are very difficult here. So, when this is a free-flowing right, you can't cross, there's no stopper, you've got to pay attention as people are coming on this road to cross into this island and get all the way across, because there's no stop control there. Also for the bikes, so the bikes get confused, you probably see it all the time to some degree, is the bikes, as they come back across in the lake loop, they come up this multi-use path, and they start to ride on this side of the street before they cross over here. It's very untypical to have, to have a bike cross kind of mid like that across the street. I mean, what we'd want them to do is come across here and get in the bike lane and go up the right side of the road. So, well, at public works, what do we look at? We looked at two things, a four-way stop, traditional four-way stop at that location, and a roundabout. A smaller roundabout, mini roundabout. The roundabout, while it worked good, and it just was, it overtook the space a little bit, and it probably wasn't big enough for what it needed to be, and we were trying to avoid some of the properties at the intersection. Public works came out, they decided that, two things, either do nothing or change it to a four-way stop was probably the two things that kind of came out of there, four-way stop being the one that had probably the most votes. So what does that do? It eliminates this pedestrian island altogether. And you can't see it, I wish you could see it better, but there's two lanes here and a bike lane. One's a right lane to turn, and one's a through left. So there's two stacking lanes here at the four-way stop. Same way coming this way, there's a left-only lane and a through-right lane. Coming the other direction, there's just one lane, and coming this direction, there's just one lane. There's no need for a right turn lane here, I modeled that, that came out of the public, or out of the public comments at the public informational meeting, and they're right, that doesn't need to be there. One of the big things that came up was how much more queuing is there going to be? You know, what is this going to, what is this going to create? What kind of congestion is this going to create? Right now, when we went out and counted this during peak periods, this Bridge Road movement and the AM backed up 15 cars when we were there the day in the morning when we counted it, because of that stop. Because all this other traffic's moving free, they have to stop and wait for it to stop. So, we modeled it with existing traffic today, and I put it on here, the AM queues look like that. So, during the peak, the AM queue for a vehicle would be about that length. What is that length? There's five cars here, so a little over 100 feet. There's three cars here, which was 15 cars at the peak period before, it balances it out a little bit. The PM you would be worried about, so this is the AM, the peak AM period, the PM would be the next one, as they come back into Manona, and there's only two cars or four cars total, two cars in each lane here, two turning left, two going through. Now, this is just for a sliver of time, but on average, if you pulled up to this during the peak hour, this is kind of what you'd see. Yes, there would be people stopped here, and there'd be people stopped almost in all directions during peak hour. But, you'd still travel through here, so you might think, well, that's today, Josh, what about tomorrow, right? So, when we look at intersections, we look 20 years out. So we did model this 20 years out. We grew the traffic from here, and we took into the redevelopment area. And it does make a difference, in the AM, it does get worse. I'll show it to you. So, in the AM, and that's why we had this bay already going all the way back here, it will queue back the whole bay, 10 cars. On this other route, it will queue back seven cars, better than 15, but seven. You might say, well, that's a lot of congestion. The average wait time for this 10-car queue is going to be roughly around 50 seconds. So four-way stops move pretty fast. You don't think it, but when you get there, you know, they constantly kind of are moving. 50 seconds isn't that different than a signal waiting for a cycle of 60 seconds. So it's like you're kind of waiting one cycle of a signal. This is 20 years out with projected traffic of growth. So this would be a typical life of intersection where you'd want to do something, maybe start to think about doing something different. The PM doesn't, go ahead. The PM doesn't look much different. It queues back six cars here, three in each lane, which we expected, and that's why the queue, the bays were like that.
I was just curious about, on the previous slide?
Yep.
The, apparently you're projecting increase in traffic volume?
Yep.
Like, do you know about how much increase?
We were going about half percent a year on addition to what was coming on for the redevelopment site. And, you know, in an area, let's say Fitchburg, that's out where it's growing and it's expanding its limits, on the outer limit, you could maybe expect 2%, maybe a little more. Usually when it's a developed area, like you have, and all your land's developed, half percent, it's pretty conservative, you know, unless you have major, major, major redevelopment taking place. A lot of this goes to residential, though. So you're probably not going to have major redevelopment of residential into commercial, but you may. So what's the solution if 10, 20 years down the road, you start to see congestion here? As a four-way stop, you could add a light at some point in the future. That would be the next probably step down the way, 20 years down the road, or heavy redevelopment, you're seeing more and more traffic. The other thing that's going to happen here, one second, Nancy, the other thing that's going to happen here is, as it gets congested, you're going to see people use other routes. They may start to use Manona Drive and Broadway a little bit more and not use Winnicor Road, and Bridge Road is cut through. Bridge Road and Frostwood might slow down on their cut-through traffic a little bit, also because now you put a four-way stop here. So one other benefit to the four-way stop here when we were thinking about this, is So one other benefit to the four-way stop here when we were thinking about this is what's going to happen to Winnicott Road in the future as you head north, right? Maybe the bump outs go away. If they go away, there's been discussion about, well, the road might speed up. Fair statement. You know, we might actually put more than a nine-foot lane there. We might put a ten, eleven-foot driving lane there and there won't be the bump outs and you'll have, you know, biking stuff there and it will speed up potentially a little bit. But that's why Maywood's a four-way stop and we proposed, or a three-way stop, and we proposed maybe raising a couple intersections along there, right? To slow them down. And then when you add a four-way stop at the southern location, again, you're slowing down traffic so they aren't speeding through this corridor and picking up speed. They know they're going to have to come down here and stop. So that, that might be a thought that goes behind it too, is what are you going to do along the corridor as you head further north in the future? This may help a little bit, um, in, in that sense. Nancy, I'm sorry. I was trying to get it all.
I'm appreciative of the, uh, the small amount of time for that kind of queue. I guess maybe it's just my dragging. Although I have a pretty impeccable record, I find when I'm at a four-way stop that if there's only, you know, a few cars, I, I have a pretty good sense of like whose turn it is to go next.
Yep.
But if there's a huge queue, if there's ten, a ten-car queue or a seven-car queue, um, sort of keeping track, if you will, if I'm in that queue or it, I don't know, just, is it just me? I mean, I feel like maybe it's a little bit more complicated when you have that large of a queue without a light, where it's, where people are having to keep track themselves of like, whose turn is it to go next, et cetera. Did you ever hear that?
It's, sometimes it gets a little more aggressive the more the queuing it is. So people tend to be a little more aggressive at the intersection and take gaps quicker versus when there's a couple of cars that slowly pull up, they kind of pull up and they wave you, you know, they wave you, no, it's your turn, no, it's your turn. But when it's congested, they start to kind of get aggressive on, whose turn is it? No, it's my turn.
Right. Um, so is that not, that's part of my point, is that not a concern when you have that kind of queue in peak hours?
Yeah, I mean, it is going to be different. I told that a couple meetings now is that, this is going to be the tough one for people. Is this, I used to roll right down here and just, and just move right through this intersection.
Sure.
And now I'm, and now I got to wait, you know, and now I got to stop. Now, the ten cars looks daunting, but again, that's projected out. I mean, day one, it will be a little, it should be more like this five-car queue. So I mean, you will, you know, become accustomed to it over time. It's not like you're going to get down there. And I'm putting five up here. That does not mean you're not going to maybe see ten at some point. Because you could get a sliver of time where there's just a lot of people coming down Winnicott all at once. Um, where you do see those small little sliver periods. This is just on that average peak hour what you would see there on the modeling. It's, it is, it is tough because it's going to take, you're taking these free-flowing movements away from people that aren't used to stopping there at all.
Right. So I guess, I guess my question would be, I mean, you said down the road, we might want to consider lights.
You, you may have to.
As opposed to a four-way, is there some reason why we're not, I mean, is, is the volume of traffic so little now that it doesn't make any sense to do that now? Or is, are we, are we not doing it for financial reasons?
I think if you do lights now, today, you're going to see that they don't meet the warrants because there's not enough traffic and you're going to wait longer at a red light or a green light when you don't have to.
Okay.
And on off-peak times, because you have, this is pretty peaky. It's, it's very AM, PM, that hour it is very intense. But then off-peak times, you're not sitting there waiting for a signal. You come to the stops and you make a brief stop and, and you go. Versus sitting and waiting for a thirty to sixty-minute red light cycle.
Okay.
Yep.
Alda Corv.
I'm just curious with the modeling that you did for twenty years out, did you take into consideration kind of the trend for people to reduce driving? So that, you know, this newer generation is not like driving places frequently, or is this based on historical models?
So we took it more on a more historical half-percent growth. But you're right, if that happens, then it takes longer to get to the congestion I'm showing. We took a very conservative approach. We thought of a fairly conservative approach to look at it that way. Is to say, what if you did grow a half percent and the redevelopment, their traffic came in, what would you expect to see if that still happened? Now, I agree, some of the trends going the opposite way, which would only make the intersection last longer. Yep, as far as the serviceability of it and the feel that you wouldn't have to signalize it.
And frankly, this is designed with pedestrians in mind, so the hope is that will increase the amount of pedestrians and bike traffic as opposed to cars.
Anyone else?
Any more questions?
Just, when you said prepares intersection for Winnicott improvements, are you saying then that we would be widening, uh, or doing what we need to in that initial part going onto Winnicott now?
That was kind of a little bit of a note for me is, you know, you would maybe extending, you're, you're setting up your crosswalk here, right? A ten-foot wide crosswalk that the bikes can get over to these bike lanes on either side, you know, that you will have. And you're setting up sidewalk potentials that could go off here. It's, and you're setting up maybe a four-way, like a slowdown kind of intersection that you may need because you are doing other things on Winnicott Road that you're going to take out to calm traffic. So this is kind of adding, this is cutting, adding the bookend to the calm traffic on the opposite side. May, Maywood, this kind of bookends it at the other side and you might put a couple books in the middle to slow or calm traffic down.
But it's not something that we would have to redo to three years from now and we redo it?
No, this is, has that thought in it. Yes.
On wood.
Yeah. And the, the wide sort of pink colored, it's been, look pink on there, but I think it is in reality.
Yep.
That's going away.
That is going away, yes. So you're talking about this wide kind of bike lane that comes out and shoots the bikes up here. That will go away. They will come across, remember this structure here, and they're going to have to use this ten-foot crosswalk. Now, remember, traffic stopped here. They can come across and get on the bike lane and go up. There won't be any, we won't be taking them up here and just jutting them out in the road anymore and, and having them get across. So they're going to be using this, what we would probably put a high-vis or some sort of a paint on that too, to show that it's a crosswalk. We'd have to, we'll have to still talk about how we would want to paint this so that people know that that's a very, you know, supposed to be used, bikes and pedestrian crosswalk. There'll be a little bit of training. That area already is a little confusing to bikes and pets. Um, so they're going to have to get used to it. Same with the cars. The, the good thing about the four-way stop is it's somewhat enforceable now too for law enforcement. You know, they can sit there and if somebody's going to run a stop sign, they're going to see it.
I did want to just add, offer one, I guess, comment that we already have a situation now where there's congestion and it's, but it's all on the southbound Bridge Road or whatever it is.
This is already that problem.
Westbound.
Yep. That already stacks well beyond some of what we're already projecting here today.
Yep.
Brad?
I have a question. I just want to know, um, do, do the pedestrian paintings, the striping for crosswalks and bike lanes match NACTO guidelines or what guidelines do you follow that style?
Yeah, we could, we would follow those, um, you know, on the MUTCD and what they wanted, what would want to do. I mean, some people are getting very progressive and they probably paint that in that high-vis green. That whole crosswalk would be high-vis green. That you probably have seen in Madison, some, in some of Madison's now. So if it's going to be a, a bike area, because right here, you're going to want to make sure the bikes cross here, right, to get into this lane. It's part of the lake loop. They're coming here and they're crossing here to go back. Is they may paint this, that high-vis green paint. It's a little bit of a maintenance thing, issue, you know, every couple of years you're touching it up. Depends how it goes through a winter cycle, but that's kind of becoming the, the theme for bikes, especially in Dane County now. Yep.
And green is the color for bikes, is that?
Green, yep.
And we are, we have included a number of those in the ped bike plan, so it would be consistent, I think, to use it here.
Yep. That's a good point, Doug. Yep, very good point.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Just to somebody who uses this intersection a lot, I think a four-way sign, especially at peak times, drivers get more aggressive and they try to get through. It'll make it a little more dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists. I also question some of the backup numbers. I use this intersection every day. I never see, it's really rare to see more than two or three cars backed up on Bridge Road. And coming home in the evenings when that stoplight from Bridge Road and Broadway, that'll back up sometimes when you cars get through an intersection and you get a huge chunk of cars. You get, you get more than two cars backed up there at peak times in PM for sure. I mean, right now you have five or six cars at a time going through there.
Here, here you're saying, just so I'm, just so I understand, right here?
Right.
As they come back across with the queue?
I mean, almost every car that comes, most of the cars that go through there are turned left.
Yep.
And, and you also made a comment about alternate routes. For most of Manona, that's the route to Broadway. There, there isn't an alternate route unless you drive through like self in circles. That's just the way to go. Fourth map of Manona, which forces everybody to cross, leaves and ovens to go an extra two miles around.
Anyone else? Josh, were you, we were kind of in the middle and we started asking you questions.
I only have a few more things. Yep, if you want me to go through those real quick and then I can just wrap up.
I just had a question about the bridge. Could we step back to that a little bit?
Yes, we can. We can definitely step back to the bridge.
When I went to the public meeting, um, you talked about the bridge being closed for what, two months?
I'm going to talk about that.
Okay.
Also.
Then I'll just wait.
That's the next thing is construction staging and what we're going to do here. Yep. Is that, is it going to, all of it's going to be based on your question on there?
Yeah, it was just about that.
Um, so how are we going to construct, construct the project? Bridge Road will be closed in two different stages. That was the initial thought at the public meeting. We can talk about that more tonight. Local access will be maintained during both phases, stages. So we really want to make sure everybody on the road can get in and out. But we want to close the road altogether for people that use the route every day. So this is a tough one too during construction. Private utility relocation will occur prior to the city work, so the undergrounding of the power, like some of the gas work that has to take place along there, Charter, AT&T, all that stuff should be happening in the spring before we get out there. And then we're not going to allow any parking along Bridge Road during the project was, which is very typical for a reconstruction project. So how are we going to do this? We're first going to put up these big electronic signboards, right, that you see that says, you know, a couple, couple of weeks out to say, Bridge Road will be closed. Find an alternative route. We decided not to mark a detour plan or a route because we didn't want to force all of this Winnicott traffic or somewhere else down a few roads for, um, residents. Instead, all of them being local, they should know how to get to a different location. So we're going to sign it as it is going to be closed and allow the residents to disperse accordingly. So what you're seeing in here would be stage one of what was proposed at the public meeting and we can, we can further discuss this. In orange, we would close it completely to all vehicle traffic, no vehicle traffic whatsoever. Purple would be under construction, but we would have to maintain local access. Mainly for the landing and the Riverwood Apartments, two separate entities. Not, the parking lots aren't jointed, but we can join them here. I've talked to both the condo association and Riverfront Apartments. They're all on board to join the two parking lots here. So when orange is closed and purple's under construction, everybody will leave this access point here and have full access back down to Bridge and Broadway. And then the red roads in there will all be built prior to this starting. So all of the redevelopment area will have in and out. So they'll be able to get out here and out here as part of, as part of this phase.
So the bridge itself will be closed?
Yep, and I'll talk about that as a, as a side note.
Okay.
Yes, in this, in this case, the bridge is closed completely. Let's shut it down. And there was opposition to that. I'll have a solution in one second here. Mayor. Um, the other, second stage would be in orange to the south. So this is all built now. Now, the apartments and the landing can get out of the landings access up here because we connected the parking lots. And they have full access to either come down or go back the other direction. And all of this will be built. We still have to talk to the bank. I think we're going to have to give a local access through here a little bit during construction so that they can get in and out of there a little bit easier. Um, at the public meeting, as the mayor points out, especially the City of Manona Fire and police have an issue with that bridge being closed. That's as their main access point from their facilities out to South Town, out to Walmart, out to all the businesses. And it sounds like about eighty percent of their calls go this direction, right? So there was a thought of, what if we staged the bridge? What if we kept the bridge open to traffic? So we would construct the bridge then in two sections, right? We'd only make one lane of traffic available though. In order to build this bridge, we can't have two lanes of traffic going on it. We would, and this is kind of hard to see, but what you'd do is you'd build one half of the bridge and allow just traffic on one side and switch it over to the built side and allow traffic, I mean, build the other side. But we'd only have about fourteen to sixteen feet of, of width, not enough. So we could, we could do two things, I see here. We could put up a temporary stoplight that overhangs on either side. You'd see green and red, so you, one direction goes and then the other direction goes, right? And you stop, start, stop, start. Have a constant timing on it. You'd have to wait for the light to turn green on one side because it would turn red on the opposite side. The bridge would clear and you'd proceed through. Then it would turn the opposite way and you'd go the other way. There's some cost to that and there's some annoyance to that. My other thought is, what if we just left it open one direction? You could only come on a one-way out. So you could only, just like the fire and the police have been saying, well, we always want to go that way. Well, I had a question to them, can you just go back a different way then? You're not, it's not an emergency situation when you go back the other way. Maybe just allow the bridge just to travel outbound. So just to go out towards Broadway in one direction. And you don't put up signals. And sure, we're going to have to enforce it a little bit. It's going to be confusing and late at night, somebody's going to sneak through the opposite direction, I'm sure. But that's another possibility, that you'd only allow it to go, which I would say kind of south on Bridge Road, out to, to Broadway as part of the project, the entire time. No matter which direction, we'd switch it on, it would always just be an out. I, I'm saying outbound to South Town. For, for, um, I guess you could keep it for everybody if you wanted to. Or you could restrict it to just emergency vehicles. But again, I think you're going to have, have the fact that anybody's going to use it as part of the project. What does this do? It probably increases costs about ten percent. The bridge right now is estimated at all the surface improvements, the walls and the railing around three to three-fifty-ish. So you're probably another thirty to forty thousand dollars in. Timing-wise slows down a little bit. Some of the staging stuff, um, costs a little bit of money, so.
How much longer would it take, I think?
I, I mean, I don't think the time is, is important, maybe a couple of weeks in either, in either stage. I don't think it jeopardizes how long that stage was going to take to begin with on either, you know, it's not going to jeopardize the project. It's just going to take longer overall for the contractor to build it.
Wouldn't you have to stage the rest of the street though too?
Um, you would. And that, and that is, that is a good point. The other thing I was thinking is, it was nice when I closed this because that's when I was doing my bore too here and I want to kind of set a pit up here and a pit on the other side. And now I'm going to restrain the boring contractor to say, well, we're keeping this half open, so you can only be have this half of the street when you bore across to open a pit on either side. They could do it. I looked at it a little bit, but again, we're kind of starting to control their site a little bit by allowing traffic to come through there. It could be done. It's going to, it ultimately is going to cost probably a little bit more money when we start to say, well, you got to keep live traffic here for a majority of the project.
Would that be additional to the, what you already said that in?
Yeah, probably. There might be a little more cost for some of the boring guys and stuff to kind of hold back. And, and the street guys to kind of build it in stages too. You're right.
So, sorry.
Andy?
So if you do that, how would you control what is currently proposed as a four-way stop? Because it obviously couldn't be a four-way stop if you're having, well, no, I guess if you're one-way traffic, it would allow it, but if you do both of it?
I think if you were going to allow that to move, I think we'd put up four temporary signs right off the bat and say, now it's a four-way stop. Get used to it probably at that point. Because there's construction there and you can set up, you know, you can, you can set up some, some barrels and limit some lanes and just turn it into a four-way stop right away. I think is what we'd want to do if we were going to allow it. Start to condition people. Plus they'd have to go through the traffic, um, here for a majority of the summer, so it's going to be slow-going. Any other questions on that? Any, any, well, as we move into the other thing, I'd like to hear some answers on, on what you guys think on a couple of these items, consider. So then it's just project schedule. It's kind of all drawn out up there. We're in that yellow January. You don't have to read it all. The important dates are, we're going to, we're going to advertise and bid this in February. The end of February, the bids will come back. We really aren't going to start this though until after the fourth. So here's, here's the construction schedule timeline, after July fourth. Because we're going to build all that interior roads first in the riverfront. They're supposed to be done at the end of June. And then we're going to start the Bridge Road stuff. Again, it's, it helps the access to the businesses and, and allows um, people to make all the movements as part of that. Plus there's commitments already to do that redevelopment site by the end of June. So this would start July and go through November. Couple of months, two to two and a half months probably each stage. That's it.
Anyone? Andy and then John?
So the ordinance that's before us was not passed by Public Works. They did not recommend a four-way stop?
Did they? Okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I missed something.
Was that a formal void, was it a call?
Yeah.
And what other, so there's got to be other examples of a high pedestrian traffic, high vehicle traffic that has that bike kind of crossover that has to happen, right? From the lake loop, kind of that weird, what we were talking about, one of the reasons for the four ways.
Yeah.
To widen that path, get them off if they're coming from the Lake Point side.
Yep. Yep.
Coming off the path but staying on kind of the opposing side traffic, which normally.
They'd be on the opposite side.
They would be on the opposite. What other, I mean, were there other ideas kind of floated around? There's got to be other intersections like this, right? That kind of have this high pedestrian, high vehicle traffic.
John Nolan at Willie Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. They kind of come through there somewhat awkward. They kind of cross and then cross back and go onto the path. They have that high-vis marking there to, to say, here's where you're supposed to be and it kind of pops at that intersection a little bit. But they try to cross them. There's nothing that runs against traffic there. I think they try to cross them in front of most of the movements, don't they?
Well, and kind of with that, I would say if we have that intersection, if we may get a four-way stop, I almost think we should have flashing lights or something, you know, like a button to push.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, I mean, there, I'm just trained to stop. You push the button and you kind of wait.
Yep.
But here, without something initiating a stop.
Well, you have a stop sign.
Well, you do, you do.
That's, see, that's the difference. Yeah, right, right.
Sometimes don't.
So you're, you're kind of, you're suggesting maybe putting like rapid flashing beacons maybe on, on the corners here so that if people come across, even if they're stopped or they can still hit it, and it kind of lights up that sign and that sign so that everybody knows, hey, I'm crossing here. Even if somebody wants to turn here, hey, I'm crossing here.
Yeah, because in my mind, you know, somebody, a biker or pedestrian would just think to cross and they would start and everyone's stopping coming at you.
Yep. Coming from here.
But then the left lane would all of a sudden go and not.
They would go and, and come into you or something, yeah. So you could push something.
I just think it needs to be more visual.
Yep.
I guess that doesn't stop my other question of like, what other options would be included here aside from roundabout?
I mean, you, you're going to go with your traditional intersection like this? Or, I mean, we were thrown out, why did, why did the pikes even come here? You know, we should be building a bridge back here across and taking them up through, what park is that? Grant?
Graham.
Graham Park. You know, then that would solve everything, but another bridge across the Ahara is probably going to happen.
Yeah.
Brad, did you have a?
Yeah, right. It'd be cool.
As early, early, early discussions about this particular section between the, where the bikers come on from the path and the intersection at Winnequa Road, we discussed with the city of Madison possible solutions to it. And the agreement for the group was essentially, nobody is going to cross Bridge Road from the bike path, go the correct direction on the opposite side of the street, hit the stop sign, and then try and cross to the left. So you would essentially have to cross two lanes of traffic, go into the left turn lane of traffic as a biker over that short distance, and then turn left onto Winnequa Road. And because it's such a short distance, that just doesn't, it would not be logical for a biker to do. And nobody probably would do it, follow the rules, standards of biking. So that's why the proposal for the large two-way on the one side, on the north side of the bridge was proposed.
Right, so Brad's talking about this. If they came on this bike loop, don't put a ped path here for them. Make them come across here, get on a bike lane, but then we'd have to provide a way for them to cross. And, you know, they'd be on the right side of the street and then cross here and go up the loop. And the same way, as these people are coming down here, they're on their red bike lane and then they'd cross in and get rid of this. Everybody's on one side. The problem, like Brad said, is everybody's so used to being on this side that even if that was a sidewalk, they would take it. So why not just keep it as a multi-use path and have a big crossing here that's painted and get them across where it needs to be? So we were kicking around other ideas, especially with the city of Madison. I mean, they have, they're pretty in tune to some of this stuff and it's a tough one. It is.
So would that be why is a sidewalk by the convention center where they have, it's designated bike and walk?
It's going to be 12 plus four, I think it's close to 16, 14 to 16 feet.
Yeah. Because I think what they have is kind of both traffic.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be both directions.
Bike and then just unified pedestrian one.
Yep. So it's, it'll be fairly wide there.
Did you have something else?
Sorry, one more question. Sorry. Was there a reason why Public Works didn't vote on it? Most things coming out of committee are voted on.
You know, we had, it was labeled as a discussion of the design items. No, no real reason why we didn't have a formal motion. But in lieu of that, we did go around the room. Every committee member spoke on, on what their opinion was and their preference. And the final tally was, everybody was in favor of the four-way versus the roundabout. Josh mentioned earlier that in the future, when we do reconstruct Bridge Road in this intersection, there's going to be conduit placed underground. So when, when the time comes, if the city council at that time wants to go with the traffic lights, we can add them then. But it was a, it was a poll, if you will, and I don't know if that's good enough for council or not, but, you know, we, we, we had everybody's opinion and that's, that's how we're bringing it forward, so.
Jennifer, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? Molly and then Chad.
While you're up there, Dan, so you said it was basically unanimous to vote in favor of the four-way stop versus a roundabout, but did you also vote for four-way stop versus doing nothing? Did you have a secondary vote? Were you compared those?
No, there were some people that said that, but I don't know if you voted. There was no one who voted for the current, or no one who polled for the current format.
Okay.
It was, it was pretty unanimous for the four-way stop.
Thanks.
I was just going to add that, you know, we had a thoughtful discussion of the roundabout option. And, and I can just say, I'm sure this council knows it, I'm a big roundabout advocate and they, they work very well. I love them. And they're good for moving traffic, too, which, you know, a lot of people you think in Manona would be excited about. But it's so congested at this intersection for bikers. And I think we're going to see an impressive rise in pedestrian traffic to this beautiful new, you know, riverfront development. So I think we're just being responsible by putting a more traditional intersection there, not asking the community to accept something which it has historically been very opposed to, the roundabout, while dealing with the thing, because there's nothing functionally wrong with a four-way stop. It's just not quite cutting edge for maybe doing all the things it could do. That said, there's very limited real estate at this intersection. And, you know, Josh had a great, you know, study of what that might be. And it just doesn't make sense to try to squeeze a roundabout in there. But it, this does serve all users.
We would have had to purchase real estate. And the, the large tree at the southeast corner of the intersection would have had to come down. And it's a beautiful, is it an oak tree?
Yeah, it's a burl.
Yeah. So I think that's why they moved on from that. Plus, you, you can't move bikes and pedestrians, at least at this location, safely, safely through that roundabout. So I think, I think that's why the, the committee focused more on the four-way stop. And the, the current intersection design as it stands right now, and Josh, you might know more about this, but it doesn't meet any of the, the design standards. It's more of a, I don't want to say a throw together, but if you were to design that today, you wouldn't design it that way right now.
No, it's, it's not traditional. It's very traditional. There is cases like this out there, but it's, when people have opportunities, they do try to clean it up. I will, I've stated it a few times at several different committees and with the public is, this, the current situation moves traffic well, though, because it allows free-flowing movements. It's not going to move traffic as good when you go to a four-way stop or even a signal. It's not going to move it as fast because you're allowing, now you're stopping everybody. You're, you're creating an equal balance on the intersection versus letting certain movements run unfree. So there is that, you know, as you pointed out, I mean, there's these cues that, you know, you're going to have to get used to in different situations. Now, yeah, some days they're not always there. Some days they are. When we counted it, when we counted that intersection, there's 15 there that one day. I mean, it, it's amazing how much you can come through an intersection and two minutes later, it can be five, six more cars. It all depends on arrival. It all depends on arrival at the intersection.
This will be safer than what we currently have for bicyclists and pedestrians?
By far.
For sure.
By far, yeah.
Andy, did you?
So that's connected to the question that I was going to have is, I don't know if this is stats that you'd have, but the accident rate for a four-way stop compared to, you know, the real-time accident rate that we have here, which I think is very, very minimal.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any statistics I can look into that for you. But I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be less stopping versus something that's free-flowing.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
That's just your opinion, right?
No, I can find, I can find backup material on that.
We have the data for the ad hoc, like, committee.
Baltimore?
So just, just to be clear, I was not suggesting that I was having a problem slowing down for a stop. And in fact, I, I agree with you that I think that the stops actually will mitigate some of the issues we have about speeding through this part, that bad part of Winnequa. Because people will have to prepare for slowing down for a stop sign. As somebody who uses that constantly coming from where I do. What I wanted to speak to, just may seem like a non sequitur, but I just wanted to applaud Madison and Manona's decision to go with a stormwater replacement of a 100-year event. Believe it or not, I've been spending my nighttime, my bedtime reading for the last couple of weeks has been on resiliency, issue of resiliency, which I think is something we're all concerned about given the flooding that we just went through and, and something I think we obviously need to continue to be concerned about as a city. And there were some great articles, for those of you that didn't read your, your league magazine two months ago, there was, or last month, there was, there was some great articles in there. And one of the things that they talked about was, in fact, you know, making sure that everything is at the 100-year level. So I just want to say, I think that piece is, is important, which is very necessary.
Elder Moore, I think what happened was after we had the flooding in late August, we went back to the drawing board and we looked at this again. And that's when we decided we need to tackle this because Bridge Road being reconstructed, the riverfront being constructed, it'd be a shame to have this again in two, three, four years, knowing we could have done something about it. So we went back to the drawing board with Madison and corrected it, so.
Great. Anyone else?
So Josh, you're looking, not necessarily tonight, but at the next meeting for sure. Not just the approval or, or not on the four-way stop, but also on how to handle the staging of the bridge, construction, whether to keep any traffic, you know, keep it open in some way or another.
Yeah. I'd like to, I mean, those things I'd like to tell the contractor. Otherwise, we're going to have change orders if we decide later.
Right.
Alder Corr?
I guess I'd like to know from, from Chief Estranga and from Chief Sullivan, what like response time differences would be if we closed the bridge? And, you know, how many calls this would impact on a daily basis? Because this is going to be two months that we're going to be closed completely, you know, versus potentially $35,000 in additional cost to the project.
Maybe a little more. You pointed out, but yes, you're right. Once this goes, they can come through here, though, right? So you're right, it's only that first couple of months. Yeah.
And presumably, the alternative while this is closed is to head out to Moon Drive and come down Drive.
Or go that far and go out Falcon Circle or something.
Yeah, they can go forward Falcon. I mean, there is a way out there, but it is, it'd have to go through a little bit of residential as part of that.
If they use the ladder truck, the ladder truck would probably have to go, go down Nichols to Manona Drive and out. The ladder truck, I think, would have a hard time on the residential.
Yeah, they thought, they were, they were working on that, yeah.
So city administrator Gatto, you could work with the police and fire to get those numbers for the next meeting?
So at the next meeting, will we have it on the agenda for a vote on the 22nd then for the design features?
I think, assuming we have those numbers.
Okay.
Does that make sense for everyone?
Can I just add, too? As long as we're talking to police and fire, it seems to me that part of our decision of whether we go one way versus doing the stoplight thing, might also, I mean, you said, Josh, that you're, you think that they really only need one way from, from, you know, from a safety standpoint, but I'd want to confirm that with them, too.
That was just a thought in my head.
Yeah.
As I was thinking this through more and more, and I thought, you know, I kept hearing that they have to get there. They have to get there.
Right.
Not necessarily that they have to get back a certain.
Right.
And I would, I was thinking, well, maybe that's true for emergency response. So I was just, my thought was, should we just always just provide it one-directional? And we want to put up these kind of temporary mass with.
Right.
Signals up because that, that costs money to have those there for two months running and, you know, renting them and. So that's a thought, too.
Sure, but I would just want to confirm that it's only one way, as you're saying.
Yes, that it would only be one way.
Right.
Oh, yeah. I'd like to tell the contractor that also because I can tell them what kind of traffic control that he needs for that location. And police might want to just consider, well, how am I going to? It's not so much emergency time, but how am I going to enforce some of this, too? So maybe enforcement to them may be a question. They might say, no, I want the signals. I don't want to have to deal with people going back and forth and somebody getting, you know, going the wrong way on accident. I just want the signals there. It has to be that way. I'm not sure. I'd like to hear what, what they have to say.
How soon would you like these answers, answers from the council? Would you like them by the next meeting or?
Yes, by next meeting, probably, minimum. If we're going to, we, so we wanted to advertise the first week of February.
Okay.
So that would mean we'd have final plans. If that gets bumped a little bit, then maybe it gets bumped a little bit. We were trying to kind of get out sooner than later out the gate for prices, so.
Prices are coming back high right now. Madison has bid a few projects in the past couple of months and the bid prices that are being received are sometimes more than double what their estimate was, so.
Wow.
The sooner the better that we can sell there.
Anyone else? Chad?
So Josh, did I hear you say you wanted our opinion on that railing detail?
Well, that was the only other thing that I could remember and maybe you guys have to jog my memory a little bit because I was a little fuzzy on this, the, the intersection. But I thought there was a discussion on, well, one of two things. Do we want new rail or do we want to use the old? We can put a bid alternative to try to use the old. In the back of my mind, we've kind of debated at work a little bit, like, you've got to take the old rail off. You've got to ship it somewhere. You've got to get it powder coated. You've got to bring the old rail back. A lot of it's just putting it all together and taking it all out and transporting it. Is it going to be that much cheaper than just putting up a rail you really like? You know, I, I don't know. It was a debate at Public Works and I didn't get into the debate with them.
Sure.
That and just the way it looks and there was a little bit of debate, do we put Blackbridge on, do we not? Should we make that an alternative? I don't think we need to make it an alternative if it's, if it's $1,000 personally because we're talking about almost $3 million job. I think we either like it or we don't, probably. And maybe it's up to you guys.
I can only say, the, the Public Works Committee, there were definitely some voices who wanted to see if we could reuse that rail. Though there were some of us that also were like, how, why would we do this project and not put in an attractive, newer-looking rail? We're salvaging the bridge.
Right.
And rebuilding it. It's not like we're just throwing money away here. We're being frugal on the one hand, but we're also trying to make it more functional and more beautiful.
Right.
It doesn't strike me as something that a contractor would balk at giving an option on.
No, I think they would.
But I think we're going to find that the cost benefit of, of trying to reuse it is not as good as some people on the committee may have thought, but.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I think we'll, the bid will be wrote with C5 as the main item in the bid. The.
Which is that style.
Right.
Yeah.
The, the bid alternate will be for powder coating the existing railing and installing it.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll go in saying this is the rail, but give us a price if we want to use the old one.
And this is the one at the bottom you're talking about?
Yes, yep, yep.
They're kind of.
Yep, it kind of swoops up. There was like five different rail types. They're all DOT crash-approved and this was just kind of what came out of their selection. They, there's a little, subtle differences with all of them, but they're all kind of a decorative rail style like this.
Can I just ask out of curiosity, if the old rail goes, is there a sustainable way to reuse it or recycle it or repurpose it for a different project in the future?
It would definitely be recycled. They wouldn't go to landfill. They wouldn't go to landfill.
Nope, it would not go to landfill.
At least, at a minimum, it'll be recycled.
Okay, thanks.
As far as reusing it on something else, you know, it's in kind of its sections, you can kind of see it there. It's kind of sectioned and placed to this bridge. I'm guessing they'll recycle it versus probably try to reuse it. Recycle it, scrap it for, yeah, reuse in a different fashion.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. I guess we're done, unless you have anything else. In this, we were talking item B and C then? Or did you want to do more about C, Dan?
Nope, C, I think we kind of covered it, right?
All right, well hopefully we should have those numbers at the next meeting then. Final item D, consideration of ordinance 1-19-712, updating the fees, fines, and penalties schedule. This is put forth by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Mark, were you going to talk about this? Oh, Mark is not here, good. If you put it on me. Okay, Joan, I'm sorry.
This is a yearly event where we are going to do a fee schedule update and do it all at once and for council approval. If you go through the pages of the highlighted areas, some of it is just for language change to match statute and language and statute numbers. Some of it is just that, just to update it. But the, it was found that our building permit fees of all types of building construction were way lower than our area municipalities, and we were actually losing money on some of the permits that we were issuing. And so the fees have been raised to be more in line with our neighbors. Not out of line, within, you know, in line. Then the Recreation Department did raise fees for facility uses and programming. And all of these changes have been incorporated within the operating budget. So the operating budget is based on these higher numbers.
Does anybody have any questions? Alda Kitzler?
My only comment at Finance and Personnel was just to check with Mark, because I know the Parks Board, or check with Mark, uh, check with Jake, because I know the Parks Board had a lot of discussion on the destruction of property, of people utilizing the parks to get to their property to do construction. And right now, it's a $50 fine, so obviously it's a cost benefit for them just to pay that fine and drive through it. So anyways, that was my comment, that I said at Finance and Personnel, and so hopefully we can talk about that the next time this is up.
Andrew, related to that, I've also talked to Jake about, we don't really have much of a policy about people encroaching on the parks, and I've asked him to put something together. Have you guys talked about that?
And that's encroaching and not driving on it?
Well, I'm thinking both.
Okay.
Primarily, well, we've got some encroaching where people kind of gradually creep over into the park, but then we also have a lot of these issues with people completely tearing up the park for their construction project next door.
I know, so kind of separating those two out. Our policy as the Parks Board, and I believe it's, was part of the conversation was, there is absolutely no usage of park property to get access to your property for one reason or another, whether that's construction or other things. And there was a lot of debate between that, do you make an exception if we're doing construction already in our property, et cetera? And it was the board's idea at the, or mindset at the time of, you know, 100% no access to get to your property through a park. We haven't talked about encroaching a lot. I know, I can bring that back up to them. I know that's a touchy subject.
Yeah.
But I'm happy to, I'm happy to.
Obviously, and so you figure, because I know, for instance, Wild Haven, that's been an issue all summer with
Yeah.
construction equipment in the park and, but you think that's because it's a $50 fine, and I don't know if they've even been fined.
I mean, I think it's two things. One, it's a $50 fine, and two, right now, it's Jake that goes and talks to the contractors. And, you know, timing-wise, if he gets ahold of them or not is one issue, but the other one is, you know, we talked about it a little bit, I don't know if it was last meeting, but just enforcement. This is a little different than what we were talking about, but he doesn't have the teeth to really enforce it. And so I know he's threatened in the past to have the cops come, but the cops never are able to come, so.
Has he actually asked the police to go?
I think there was one instance, and I don't know if it was Wild Haven or another one. I believe he asked them at least once, but, but no, I mean, I'm certainly happy to talk about it. But enforcement is something I know he'll bring up.
Yeah. Well, and something else related that I know came up when I was on the Park Board is I personally think if someone next to a park is doing a big construction project, they should be required to do a survey, because right now, it's always a big question, exactly where does the park end in the private property? And we don't require that, and that's half the reason we have these problems, I think.
Yeah. No, I'm happy to have that conversation.
And we don't require them to put up construction fencing as part of that?
We do. Some of them put up, like Steve Doran put up construction fencing on the other side of Wild Haven. But there was debate then about where exactly was the line, even though he had the fencing. So that's, and that's, there's been several different occasions where, situations where that's been an issue.
We have a Parks Board tomorrow, so I'll bring it up to them and see what we can do.
Okay. And that's something we could just build into the, and Jake and I have talked about it a little bit too. Just build into the building permit process. When the person goes in to get their permit, the inspector should, you know, hopefully will know, oh, you're next to a park, you have to do this or that. And should also be given information about, if we do increase the fine, what that would cost. It's no longer 50 bucks, it's, you know, that kind of thing, so. Anyone else, Alder Moore?
I also wanted to say, is it really, and Andrew, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, you know, I believe we've also been in discussion at Park and Rec around special event, special events, and what we should be charging there, because as it stands right now, you know, if somebody does a run through Manona and they dump porta-potties in our parks, or, you know, put tables out, or need assistance from our Park and Rec Department, we have not traditionally charged anything, and the, and the board has, has certainly asked Jake to, to look at kind of an à la carte fee schedule, among other things. And not only look at the number of special events, but also look at the whole idea of, of charging for those events some on an à la carte basis, so that we can, you know, when we are pressed in to service in one way or another to pick up after an event, or to place something for an event, that, that there's charges there. And so I know that's something that he's, the staff is working on.
Staff is working on a special event policy.
Right, exactly.
Which we're hoping will be done.
Policy, but also the fees.
We're hoping it's done within the next month or so, aren't we, Dan, as I said? It's having to, it's being touched by several different departments, but that is, that is in process. So we may be coming back.
But those fees would be added to this.
Right, right.
Schedule, yeah. Exactly, that's how I was getting at it, yeah.
So anyone else? Chad?
I'm, just wanted to comment on the fee that is noted here for bicycles. It's, it's item 168 2E, which pertains to our current prohibition of bicycles on the sidewalk at the north end of Manona Drive. And I know that we did not take up this specific issue on our pedestrian bicycle committee, but I would like to see us reconsider that prohibition and maybe consider, you know, signage. I mean, there's some, you notice some of these fees speak to bikers needing to yield to pedestrians when they're on a sidewalk. And, you know, we could also sign that stretch that bikers have to proceed with caution at through driveways. But as a practical matter, that is an area where many people ride their bikes. And I, I live along there now, so I, I'm adversely affected by the bikes when I come and go. And yet, it's what should have been from the beginning. And it does, nothing prevents us now from at least eliminating this prohibition. I know this is a separate issue, we're talking today about the fees, but it is something I'd like to see us take up.
Maybe you can bring it up at Public Works?
Yeah, yeah, they'll love it.
Yeah. I know it was very contentious, was it 10, 15 years ago and?
You're a short timer anyway.
Yeah.
Whether they like it or not.
Right, you're the ideal person to bring it up.
Yeah. Duly noted, thank you.
Sorry, not to belabor that point, but it does seem like there are some aged fees here. I mean, I see one that's like, "No rider shall remove both hands from the bars or feet or pedals and do an acrobatic type trick while riding a bicycle." I don't know if we were trying to prohibit people from going on some retaining wall in the library and doing. So I, I just say that, not to belabor the point, but it does seem like, and I'm not volunteering to read every one and maybe highlight the ones, but.
I had no idea we had a rule against that.
Yeah, so.
Anyone else? Okay. I think we will move into closed session then. Back to item G1A, under unfinished business. Convening closed session under Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Prem 1, Prem G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. This relates to litigation update involving the Four Lakes Yacht Club versus the City of Manona, et al., McCann's Ruto Ruters Sewer and Drain Cleaning Service Incorporated versus City of Manona, and the acquisition of 6418 Bridge of Rowway. So is there a motion to go into closed session?
Move to go into closed session.
Second. Will the court please call the roll?
Alda Kitzler?
Aye.
Alda Coor?
Aye.
Alda Groupie?
Aye.
Alda Moore?
Aye.
Alda Spate?
Aye.
Alda Wood?
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session. Alda Wood?
License review meets tomorrow, landmarks meets Wednesday, and Madison Area MPO meets Wednesday night.
Alda Spate?
Uh, no report.
Alda Moore?
There will be, on January 24th, there's a Powering Local Leadership Conference Summit on energy and resilience, and sponsored by the Wisconsin Academy of Sciences, Arts, and Letters. And I've been asked to be on a panel as a municipal person of interest. So I'm looking forward to being at this up in Appleton, and I sent you all an email about it. Certainly encouraging carp boating up there since it's Appleton. It's a two-day conference, probably speaking on the 24th at 3:30 in the afternoon.
Alda Groupie?
This coming Wednesday, January 9th, as part of the Library's One Community Many Voices Project. Troy Reeves, who's the head of the UW Oral History Program, is going to be giving a, having a discussion about best practices in capturing stories through interviews for historical purposes at the library. So check out the library website for more details, but it should be a fun event.
Alda Coor?
Just reminded to this body, we're having an active shooter training on the 23rd in this room. Ryan Luesbe is going to do the presentation from PD. And Loudon the Library tickets are on sale. Please purchase your tickets. And Ruta Vega donated a paddleboard for us to raffle off. And if you're not able to attend the event, you can still get in for the raffle for the paddleboard. And tickets are limited to 400, so your chances are pretty darn good. So I encourage you to, to purchase one.
Just to report that nominations are in, we have three, Alda's running for the three open seats, and that would be incumbents Doug Wood and Nancy Moore, and then also former ma, for mayor, oh my goodness. Former Alda Kathy Thomas has thrown her hat in the ring, so. And then the mayor, Mayor O'Connor is also running unopposed, so it should be a pretty straightforward election. There is no election on February 19th. There was no need for a primary. So there'll be one election this year, which is making a really nice year for me. Sorry. But it's rare to have that primary canceled, so. So just one election. I did put a notice on the website, and I will be making an announcement on the radio station to let residents know that there is not an election in February.
That's it. City Administrator Gatto?
Yeah, just one thing on my first day here. I sent you all an email this morning just asking for your availabilities to schedule some one-on-one meetings with you. So if you get time in the next day or two, just let me know what works your calendars, we'll get something set. It's just a chance for me to get to know you more, you get to know me a little bit more informally and kind of understand your priorities as we go forward here, so. Thank you.
The only thing I had is a reminder that our next meeting will be Tuesday, January 22nd, because of the Martin Luther King. Alvin, so. Bill, did you have anything? I'm sorry, I think you said enough. There are no appointments. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, actually, can I just, I wanted to say one other thing, that while we've been meeting, there's obviously a ball going on, and there was inauguration today, so I just wanted to say congratulations to our new governor and other elected officials that were inaugurated.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.